Yes, now, six thirty, I'd like to call this City of Menneson work session to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Cosner.
Here.
Councilwoman Nestor.
Present.
Councilperson Thomas.
Here.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Here.
Mayor Moser.
Present.
Mayor, we note five members present and a quorum.
Thank you. Pastor Silva here, I don't see him.
He is gone here.
Lois, would you be so pleased, so kind to lead us in prayer?
This is Byron from the prayer. Well, we, once again, just thank you for this day, how you just watched over us and kept us throughout this day. We ask you just continue to be with us throughout this council work session, or that you bind us all together on one accord, that you just grant us wisdom, knowledge, understanding, that we may do what is best for the City of Menneson and for its residents. In Jesus' name we pray and thank you, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take notes then, already.
At this time, I'd like to invite people to address agenda items only.
Okay, I brought this up. What does that mean, on page three, "Necesito que los oficiales aumenten su contribución"? And issues with the news.
When we get to that point, it'll be discussed and you'll understand.
You can talk about agenda items, now you're talking out of the way. Okay. This Neighborhood Partnership Program, what's that all about?
Again, you can wait till we discuss it and you'll understand it as much as anybody.
Why did you ask? Anyway, O I E, seventy-five thousand was approved for planning.
You want me to tell you the same thing?
Why did you ask?
Because it's on the agenda, you can ask questions, but these are discussion items and will it be discussed?
But what items are discussed?
The motions for payment of bills.
Bills?
Oh, that's it, that's the only question.
So he can have comments on the motion.
Just the bills? But he's not asking questions about the bills.
Okay, so Chief, this is for you, CFO. This money, sixty-five thousand, for payroll. Okay, now, when you pay this out, how much in the whole we are now going into the end of the year? You said one twenty-five thousand last time.
I'll be happy to tell you when it gets to be my part of the bills, but...
Go back.
A little, just a little over two-hundred thousand.
So now we're up to two-hundred thousand. Okay, so this goes back to the mayor. Mayor, why would you quote it in the Mon Valley paper that you think we're going to be able to meet this deficit before the year end? We went from one twenty-five up to two-hundred thousand now.
I have a different crystal ball.
How's that gonna happen?
I'm sorry, we just have different balls, different crystal balls.
Yeah, but he's the CFO, he should know more.
Okay. I'm not gonna argue with him, I'm not gonna argue with him.
When it comes to figures, Tony got the figures. Okay, anybody else with a thought?
Everybody just wants to just jump in after you, already.
Shut that off. So as far as correspondence, we only received one, one thing of significance. I'll read it, "Dear Mayor and Council, First, I would like to say what a great job you're doing. The reason for this letter is my concern on Parente Boulevard and Third Street where deer are crossing. I know they are everywhere, but because of the width of the road, drivers could go in way above the speed limit, and I was hoping that deer crossing signs could go up and something about speed limits enforced LOL. Thank you for your time, God bless, bless you all." Kathy Brucie?
Brucie.
Brucie? Okay. So it's been a busy three weeks since our last council meeting. This being a planning meeting, there will be no motions made with the exception of the payment of bills, which cannot be delayed until our regular council meeting. Discussion items are intended to lead to motions next time. My comments are entitled, are intended to express a vision to which I hope we subscribe. I invite everybody to take a look at the wall beside Highway nine oh six, Schoonmaker, between Sixth and Eighth Street. The wall has a staircase leading up to Sixth Street Park near Eighth Street that has been closed for a number of years. The wall to the right of the staircase has collapsed onto the parking lot. The very formidable concrete steps are undermined due to a failure in the combination of storm sanitary line that ran underneath them. You might recall we did an emergency repair on this last year, but time has continued to get underneath the steps. It was a temporary fix. Well, our USDA project is finally getting caught up and it's time to revisit this, that line from the dogleg on Sixth Street above Schoonmaker, straight down to Schoonmaker. Because of the grade condition and age of the old line, the new pipe will be laid directly to the right of where the steps are. The old line will be abandoned. Because of damage done by the old line, USDA stepped up to the task and included the stabilization of the steps. These steps otherwise would surely collapse on the nine oh six if less unattended, leaving an expensive mess for the city. And if you go up there and look at it, they're in pretty bad shape right now. This leads us to the wall to the left of the steps. It's holding up the backside of the hillside from coming down on nine oh six, all the way to the street. This past week, we were awarded seventy-two thousand, six hundred dollars from DCNR as a grant that allows us to implement some plans to stabilize Sixth Street Park and thus the wall. We have been in communication with DCNR to assume, to assure that our goals are in compliance with the grant. Talking of grants, we were also notified of the seventy-five thousand dollar award for the economic development. This was an LSA grant. These funds will have been earmarked to stimulate and promote development, including providing money to a team that has been working with us for the past two years. This includes some outstanding talent with experience in redeveloping communities. David Fien came to the Menneson after hearing of a man with the same name who was on city council in the past. Turns out, he had much experience in forming and organizing redevelopment of several substantial cities, not limited to East Liberty, Pittsburgh, and Detroit, along with several others. We have talked about this before, but to remind everybody, he proposed putting up a well-experienced and versatile visionary team together to lead Menneson to a prosperous future. Currently, in cooperation with a program introduced to us by Jonah Pro, Regional Director of Community Affairs, DCED, we developed a plan, we developed plans to put together an NPP program. That's the Neighborhood Partner Program. This is designed to allow struggling cities such as Menneson to put together a plan that uses private investment to fund projects that stimulate growth. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania offers a ninety percent tax credit to companies that commit to a five-year plan of investment to the community. Initial commitment requires a fifty thousand dollar per year commitment. The NPP requires a nonprofit development company to act as coordinator. Turns out, our friends across the foyer have experience and has stepped up to the plate. This is Westmoreland Community Action. The plans are for the project to raise three million dollars toward development of Menneson. They formed a committee consisting of business, education, and government to develop a plan that fits the comprehensive plan and encourages further investment in a sustainable future. This is not a new concept and has been successful in other communities. New Kensington, as example, at the other end of our county, had a project funded to rehabilitate an old building. This made the way for Voodoo Brewery to come in, which the city got behind and rallied. It became the center point for additional investment by several other businesses and has completely rejuvenated that part of the city. The point being is, a goal is to invest a little bit of money in a project that stimulates further private investment in a sustainable future. Similar projects were done in Irwin with the Lamp Theater. So let's talk a little bit about our STP program, SDMP program. This is otherwise known as early intervention. Yes, the city has experienced a pretty steady decline in population, yet our costs follow inflation, inflation continues to rise. Some years ago, you recall that a bond was obtained for the city which raised some seven million dollars to improve the quality of life. The money was invested in parks, the library, and new police and fire station. What it didn't do was provide stimulation for future investment. It was hardly even a blip on the graph showing the decline in population. It was a project that just didn't have any of the positive effect of keeping people in Menneson. We'll be paying roughly four hundred thousand dollars a year, every year, until 2040 on this very expensive exercise. We don't want to do the same thing again. With the help of HUD, DCED, DCTA teams, that's distressed communities technical assistance teams, two of them were assigned to Menneson. LISC is a team to teach us of development projects and PFM was to offer us financial guidance. PFM put together a financial analysis that reviewed the previous three years and forecast the future for the next three years. In summary, it described a population decline, the reduced tax revenue, and the increased costs that we faced. It suggested that there were three possible outcomes. One, that we go through an Act forty-seven. Two, we invest in home rule, which will take several years. Or three, we turn the city around and bring people in and increase our tax base. The LISC organization is being rethought in hopes that we can reutilize some external expertise. We've not met with them for several months now. Those of you remember, Act forty-seven was offered to the city twice immediately after I became, I assumed office. I say now what I said then, quite simply, no. Home rule takes several years to make happen, has a very unsure future, and would raise taxes. Again, I say no. The county commissioners have put together a reimagining Westmoreland County. The county has been broken up into several different districts, which we are part of the Mon Yoc Planning District. That includes Menneson, North Belvernun, Rossdaver, Smithton, South Huntington, West Newton, and Sudersville. The goal is to stem the exodus that the state is seeing. More to the, so more so for the county, more so for even Menneson. All council members are invited to attend. This coming week, the city administrator and I will be working with DCED to move us forward in the stamp program, such that we can get additional funding. We will need this to get the, we will need to get the PFM or some other similar consultant to extend the three-year forecast and make it a five-year forecast as the state requires. Remember, stamp is a program to help municipalities stay out of Act forty-seven. Only those distressed communities that refuse help end up in Act forty-seven. Let me make very clear, that is not us. So that leads us to where we are today. The county art fund has demolished over a hundred homes and we have at least that many more in the progress. We organized a bus tour to CMU, East Liberty, and Allegady Council to stimulate thinking. There are several of us here that attended that bus when we did that a couple of years ago. Our Phase Three and Phase Four sewer projects are basically completed. They will be paving the road in front of barge this coming week, weather permitting. Now, there's more work that can be done because we still have some money to be spent, but that's above and beyond what we initially planned. We have radically reduced the amount of life in our QCT, our qualified census tracts, and have the commitment for many more. Earlier this evening, we processed another nineteen properties. We received a hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars in grants that are specifically designed to help the city in ways we could not otherwise be able to. Community Action is building new homes in Menneson, radically reforming a very blighted neighborhood into a thriving example of what we can be. Our sewer system investment is part of an infrastructure that will sustain us for many years to come. We have plans for a prosperous future and only if, and if the city can work together to make it happen. This is all described in our comprehensive plan. I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel here. Another grant received this week was from the county as part of the settlement on the opioid issues in the amount of about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This is something that I was notified by our chief of police. This grant must be used as part of a drug and alcohol prevention program, but could possibly include a dare car, a dare car enforcement officer and similar type things to reduce drug and alcohol use. Is there anything you'd like to add to that, Chief?
Uh, no, it's the, it has, the grant was intended for a dare officer to apply to the dare program and a vehicle for that officer.
Perfect, thank you. All the while, we have our public library that is also struggling to stay alive and relevant. They presented a detailed report to us at their last board meeting that they held last night. Their income and expenses, and they projected their income and expenses throughout the end of the year. They are predicting a shortfall of about four thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. They are hopeful for some additional donations. We're preparing for winter. As you're aware, the Public Works Department received a new truck earlier this year, just a couple of months ago. I'm pleased to announce that they picked the truck up yesterday and it's been outfitted with the support for the salt spreader and the plow. It's ready to go. We placed a CoStar order for salt based upon our requirements over the past couple of years. I also attended the LTAP, which is a local, what does LTAP stand for?
Local Transportation Assistance Program.
This is a program put on by PennDOT related to winter maintenance of roads. It's also time to remind residents that they should park off the street to allow plows when it snows. Another little thing that needs to be reinforced is, don't shovel snow out of your driveway, right in front of your, onto the road, right in front of your driveway, or upstream of your driveway. The problem is, the plow's gonna come by, it's gonna push it right back into your driveway, you're gonna be making some hand gestures to him and thanking him for all the hard work that you did. Just put the snow downstream of your driveway. That way, when the truck, plow truck comes, he pushes it on away from your house, not back into your driveway. So pay attention to where you're shoveling the snow. That's all that I really wanted to talk about, and that addressed several different things along the... No, no, this is not a sign for discussion. No, not at all. Mention again, I'll have you removed. For asking a question. We will not tolerate any interruptions today. I'm sorry, this is for our purpose up here. No, it does not say that anywhere. The discussion is for us. So the first thing I'd like to do is discuss the upcoming budget presentation for the 2025 fiscal year. I'm gonna turn this over to Tony, who's prepared this.
We're close on our budget, we're probably within some tweaking. Revenue's probably gonna be around four point five billion, but our expenditures are just a little bit more than that, maybe about four or five hundred thousand dollars. So there's some work that needs, there needs to be some work, I'm sorry. I expect to have this by middle of next week and then send to the rest of council, because it needs to be passed at our next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll ask everybody to take a look at it. I know there probably would be wish things to have, but it's tight. I mean, it's extremely tight.
As we expected it to be.
It's, it's, it's going in the wrong direction.
The goal is to have it come balanced to a number of zero. We can't spend more money than we bring in. That's the goal of the budget.
Well, I don't look at that as the goal of the budget, I look at that as the goal over the whole course of the year. The budget's only numbers.
But it has to balance.
Anything can balance if you want it to balance, let's be honest.
Right.
So it's about forty to sixty thousand off right now. So I have to work with Linda, there's a few things I want tweaked that hopefully should make a difference, but again, we're gonna spend, we're going to get less budgeted income for 2025 than we have since 2022. It's just a fact of life, I'm sorry. So as you said, either there's three options, and I think you just outlined all three of them.
All three of them. Okay. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add to that for the budget? Let's move on then. So there, we have, coming up to us on November the thirtieth, a deadline for the state local share grant application. I think Mike has put together a lot of work that included things like a police car, a truck for the, the Public Works, a truck for the fire department, and some miscellaneous tools. It's been suggested that maybe we might want to consider doing something different. I think it's time that we all throw our thing into the pot and see what kind of ideas we come up with.
I, I would just make a comment that I hope that's brought forth to all of council, because to this moment, that has not happened.
Well, the point is, we're trying to develop that right now, we have till the thirtieth. So if you've got ideas that you would like us to incorporate into the LSA, then let us know. Will, Mike said, promised he'd work on it this weekend.
Okay, but I'd like to know what he plans on doing in that LSA.
That's what we can tell him. What do you want to do in that LSA?
Well, no, you just mentioned a few things that I don't, myself, I was not aware of, that that's what we were going for.
That, well, that's just an idea at this point.
Again, I appreciate that, but I would like to make sure that's shared with everybody, because I was aware of it. I was not aware of it.
Well, I'm just saying that we will put together this...
Do we, do you go for, is the LSA grants specific? Or do you just say, I'd like to have A, B, C, D, E, F, G? And according to this, what Lois showed me, it says there's acquisition, construction, include renovation, rehabilitation, demolition, infrastructure, purchase of vehicles, machinery, planning, consulting. They're, they're all separate grants, I take, I'm understanding.
No, the state LSA is a single grant.
Okay, so we're, are we looking for one big pot number?
No, you, you, you actually have to define what it is you want to do with the money.
Okay, well, I'll tell you right now, I think we should consider something like that, asphalt zapper, or something for the roads.
The only concern that I have is that does not work on the concrete and the brick roads we have, which is where the majority of the bad roads are.
Even if it's fifty percent, it's fifty percent that we can tackle.
Well, the fifty percent that's good, that's not concrete and so forth, is relatively good, is more recent.
The fifty, just in my opinion, fifty percent of something is better than fifty percent of nothing.
Problem is, I'm not sure we have fifty percent of anything that needs repaving.
Well, but if we put in money, if that's one of the items for the LSA and we put it in there and we get it, I can't see that as being a bad situation.
Well, perhaps.
Or do we need to look for a roller and some other paving equipment or something?
I would, I would think that if we're gonna go that direction, that's what we should do, is put enough money in there to pay for a roller, the paver, and be able to do roads themselves.
Okay, well...
I'm not against it, don't get me wrong, it's just, it's just an idea. And if we're gonna do that, we probably need to coordinate that with our Public Works to make sure we have the manpower to do it once we got it.
Let's, let's get it first. That's the easier, the other part is usually the easier part.
That's probably the harder part.
So when do you need everyone's ideas, by thirtieth, you said?
Well, but the application is due the thirtieth. It'd be nice if we had some time to massage the numbers and put together the application based upon those items.
You'll need a resolution for your meeting on the twenty-fifth.
When, when did we know about this, was this back in July, that this packet was put out?
It's been a while.
And we told what...
Well, we met with the legislative folks, the state senator and the state rep and their staff, and they gave us some ideas on things that we could possibly put in. But then there are others that have come to the table recently and we're gonna incorporate these in and apply. I have the shell of the application completed.
Because we're being given a really short period of time to come up with ideas.
We've been talking about the LSA for a long time, and we can start talking about future LSAs too, anytime too. Be quiet.
To come up with ideas in a week and a half that makes sense is a really short period of time. We've known about it since July.
Well, I mean, I want a list, I want a list of everything that's been thought of first, because I don't have one item. I mean, I just, this is the first time I've heard a police car, something for the streets. Now, I am always saying, they're always gonna need stuff, we always put stuff, but, you know, I don't want to get caught flat-footed and have us, well, we need a new police car and we're going to, it's gonna cost sixty grand, but we're only gonna get thirty thousand. Where are we supposed to come up with the thirty?
Right.
Because we're not gonna come up with it.
Right, we're either gonna get enough money to do the projects that we specify or the projects aren't gonna happen, is what it boils down to. Now, we talked to the senators and congressmen, and this is not like the county where we're expecting to be able to get a lot more money. Where we only got seventy-five thousand dollars before, we're thinking it's gonna be somewhere naming three hundred thousand dollars, three or four hundred thousand dollars. So there's enough money to do more than just a little bit. We need to think about that and how we put this together.
Can we, can council get a list of things that you've already thought of by tomorrow?
Yes.
Sure.
Yep.
Because I got no ideas.
Well, and we can talk about it. Roads are always a problem within the city, and I think it's up to us to figure out ways that we can do the roads efficiently. Okay. Let's continue on. So the next thing is the, the work that Mike has been doing on the stamp program. We originally thought we were gonna go to Harrisburg on Wednesday in an effort to push along the fact that we've already been through this with PFM. Why do we have to do another consultant to go further? DCED's been pretty steadfast that what we did with PFM was under the auspice of HUD and they want it to be under the auspice of DCED. They're willing to accept it because PFM's qualified for both, but it's three years and not five years.
We need to do another two years.
We need to add two more years to it. To me, it only makes sense that we go back to PFM because they did the three previous and they can do two more years going forward. So far, we went, we sent out an RFP, have they responded, have you heard anything from them?
From PFM?
Yes.
They have not, we received one other. And today's conversation was that we would, they would like to, on Tuesday of next week, talk about the PFM proposal, so I put a call into them to have that in for us, for that conference.
So that's still on the table, using that alone without additional work?
Right.
That would be excellent.
Tuesday of next week.
Okay, so maybe that one needs to wait till Tuesday, we need to make sure that everybody's included.
I can inform everybody on council of what occurs on that call and then what the coordination effort would look like, if that works.
So E was really talking about the seventy-five thousand dollars we already got in the neighborhood, the NPP program that we have going on.
So I have a question about that.
Okay.
What is seventy-five thousand supposed to get us?
A plan to develop the block across the street, develop the downtown area.
No, wait, downtown area or block across the street, that's two different things. Much as we can do.
Well, even, even, it's as much as we can do, but that was identified as the downtown by, by the comprehensive plan, too.
But you're, but that's not telling me what the seventy-five thousand dollars is gonna be used for.
It is...
Did you see the email that was sent to you today for the meeting?
Yeah, it had that pretty much highlighted.
It was on the outline, the basic, single application and all that information was in it. Because we didn't want to print it, it's a lot of pages, so we sent it by email for the meeting. Well, can you give me a quick summary? I could, yeah, it's a project-related grant to develop the area by bringing in, as Ernie often talks about, businesses...
as Ernie often talks about, businesses, folks that would want to come to the community to do business here in Menneson. And, and do it on a, a course of a planning-type scenario with help from the folks that put together the, the RFP. But it's all, I can give it to you specifically this evening, by email.
So if, if we're sitting here with $75,000 for this, I want to know what I'm gonna be writing checks to.
A lot of it's to be determined. A lot of it'll be based upon the work that the consultants tell us that is gonna bring people to Menneson with.
That's what I'm trying to understand here. I mean, is this gonna be consultant fees mostly?
Mostly.
No, not most, no, small amounts, but we're gonna be utilizing a planning direction that we have to, to develop the area. And that's what the funders want, Tony. The private sector and public sector funders want a plan developed by folks who have done this in the past. So we're gonna utilize, well, we have a comprehensive plan, and we, this is going to enhance what we have, specifically related to the downtown area. But the entire plan is outlined in what I sent you, so I'm probably not giving it justice of what they, they put together for it, but it will be well-spent. No, it's not all consultants.
The, the, the grant was sent to you, and I would suggest you spend a little bit of time reading how it comes to play. But the bottom line is, it is an effort to provide some economic stimulus to Menneson.
Stimulus to me means money's getting pumped into the, into the city.
Well, it could be planning, it could be making sure that we got the proper sewage system for a business that wants to come in, or whatever the case may be. The only economic stimulus that we really have to offer to any business coming in is, is basically our real estate taxes. There's just not a lot of things that we have that we can stimulate them with.
Okay.
No? Not at all. This is not a regular meeting. This, I'm sorry, but this is a work session for city council. You are welcome to, to watch what, take, how we interact, but that's the extent of it. If you're gonna interrupt us, I stated that it's on the wall. That's what it is. It's on the wall, it is a work session. You cannot say anything. You, exactly. Make no public comment about anything. It is, very thank, thank you. Okay, well, the Neighborhood Partnership Program, I kinda described what that is. If there's any questions or further discussion about that, I'm willing to talk about it.
So what exactly is that?
The Neighborhood, basically what it is, is a program Jonah Pro came to us several months ago and presented a concept whereby we could gather interest from, from industry to support our, our growth of Menneson.
Can you say that again, please?
Okay, Jonah Pro came to us a couple months ago with a plan that would provide industry the ability to promote economic growth in Menneson. And the way that this works is that industry that pays more than $50,000 a year in state income tax. There's not a lot of industry that does that, but there are some. If they pay more than $50,000 of, of money to the state tax, they can give that money to a fund that is defined for the NPP program in Menneson. They have to commit to that for five years, $50,000 per year for five years.
Okay.
And when they do that, they get tax credit from, from, from Harrisburg. So they, they basically cost them 10% to, to promote Menneson, is what that boils down to. And it's not limited to businesses in Menneson to participate in this either. It can be businesses from anywhere in the state that, that pay state taxes. So the concept is that you have to provide a plan that you want to work from. So that's something, and, and you have to have a nonprofit that, that coordinates all this. So we, we chose Westmoreland Community Action because they have a history of doing this kind of thing with New Kensington.
When did we choose them?
I think they were, wasn't Community Action, didn't he come and speak on this?
Yes, he, he actually came, he actually came here and presented that to council at one point, about too long ago. So what we're trying to put together is a plan that's developed by educators, government officials, and business people in the community that provides the, the mechanism that investment would like to be made into, that we believe that investment could be made into.
But why isn't the other one, E, in the planning and economic development, why aren't they doing that?
Well, it's two different programs. One's 75,000, the other's 3 million bucks. We're trying to get 3 million dollars on, on-
Didn't they share a booklet on-
Yes.
That explains the program? Probably should get that to council so they can read it. It's a DCED literature that does a pretty good job explaining it.
I mean, what I'm afraid of is we're gonna do, we're going in all these directions.
We're going in one direction, economic development for the city. This all plays together very well. In my mind is, it's an orchestrated program to develop the city. We're not going to get there if we, we, we piecemeal this.
I, I'd have to see it. I gotta see it. I, I'm not, I'm not in parlay for anything until I actually see it.
One of the big differences, Tony, is that the NPP program might be physical infrastructure.
Again, I need to see it. I don't have-
That, that DCED handbook does a pretty good job explaining exactly what this program's designed to do.
What we don't want to do is go build an apartment complex, as an example. You spend all your money on the apartment complex, you got no money to sustain it. You got no way to move forward with it. The thing to do would be to provide the infrastructure so that a private investor could come in and develop the, the, the apartment complex, if that's what you wanted to do. If you look at things like what happened in Irwin, the, the residents got together and formed a nonprofit. They took an old theater that had burned down, and they rebuilt it from ground zero. It took them 10 years. And in the course of doing that, they invested a lot of their own money into it. They believed in the project, they invested a lot of their own time, their money, everything. It was all done entirely volunteer. Along about year eight or so, they started attracting the attention of people like Senator Ward. And Senator Ward found some money for them to, to move, to dance it substantially. So there was some, some stimulus that was provided by, by the state. But what they ended up with is a land theater in Irwin, downtown Irwin. And I would strongly urge you to Google it, go see one of their shows. It's an excellent venue. I go, I go to their shows several times per month. They, it's done entirely by volunteers, there's only two employees in the whole group. But that theater has stimulated the, the, the opening of restaurants all around it. There's music stores directly across the street. There's, it has radically changed downtown Irwin. It is now a prosperous place. If you look at North Kensington, or East Kensington, they, they did the same thing through an NPP program with breweries. Well, breweries may not be the thing that we want here, maybe it is, I don't know. But they rallied behind that, and now there are several breweries, restaurants, and, and activities that, that go together with that, where industry is invested in it. It took, what I'm really getting at is you take a little bit of money, and you come up with an idea that a little bit of money will stimulate a big investment by industry and businesses. When, if you can do that, then you've got something that's sustainable and will continue to grow.
Okay, I understand that. I just don't want to get this in, down the road where we find out it's costing us some money.
Well, the NPP program, as it says, will cost us nothing. It is only something that will, will provide benefit to us. There should never be a time when we come to the city and say, "We need some funding for this." If we do, it has failed right there. It's just not met any of the, the, the goals that we set forth. And I'm not even sure it would be legit. I'm not even sure it would be allowed.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Will council ever have the opportunity to be a part of this? Or if there's a meeting going on that we'll be made aware of it? So we could attend and hear firsthand?
Yes.
And is this the same thing that Mon Valley Alliance, what their goals are?
No.
Because I was at a meeting last night, and there was a young lady there, and she's gonna email me this. She said it's a huge document. She said it'll answer every question we'd ever have about this neighborhood partnership.
I do know that Jonah Pro has approached Bell Vernon and Charlevoix to do the same kind of thing. So they're working on similar programs.
But there is a document that we could look at.
That's a dead long line.
That's the DCED document.
Yeah.
It explains this whole program. It is.
So we will have a chance to meet these people when they come to town and be a part of the meetings?
And I think you, you, we'll make, they're gonna be very public meetings.
Now, we'll have the newspaper there, you're welcome to attend and participate, but it'll be a core group of people that has really been defined as the people that are trying to move it forward.
So we will have the opportunity to attend these meetings and hear what they hear and what their ideas are?
Yes.
In advance, so that we could attend if we wanted to.
There's no advance to it. You'll hear them when they present. Nobody hears them.
So they just-
They're a work session.
They just, on the spur of the moment, to call up a meeting?
It's just exactly the reimagining of Westmoreland County. The same principle behind that.
But I know those meetings weeks in advance.
You know of them. You don't know what the subject is.
No, all I'm asking is, I know of them and are given the opportunity to attend and make plans in a timely manner.
Yeah, and, and as soon as we find out about them, I'd be more than happy to make sure you're aware of it.
Good, thank you.
Not a problem at all.
So, well, basically, this 3 million, one, the NPP program. So say, for instance, someone said, "Well, I, I see this lot here, I mean, this stretch here." And if it was brought up to code to what I need to build whatever I wanted to build in Menneson, and that, we would help them get that done so they could come build that industry here?
Conceptually, yes.
And so, another, and so say, for instance, the landmark down there. That's always, that was always a big entertainment center.
Right.
So if somebody say, "Hey, if you get this up to code to where I can come in and, and do this program, I can take over the landmark and make it an entertainment center."
The landmark, the landmark would be a perfect example of something that we could put, get behind.
Okay, so I'm just-
And the whole goal behind that would be that we, the, the NPP program could renovate the landmark and make it a nice place.
Well, that's what matters.
But it only works if we can find somebody that wants to run it, wants to run it.
Right, right, right.
All right.
Okay, let's talk about IT. I think we're to that point. To be honest, probably Tony and I are the only two that really even understand that. Did you get a chance to look at those, those?
I did, and in all honesty, if they, they replied to the RFP, right?
Yes, they all did, all four of them.
Then I think council needs to have all four of them present their pitch in a public forum, so we can ask questions. Which I had a bunch of questions, but I'm not gonna write everything down, and then we go back and forth. I think it, it has to be in a public forum anyways, so-
That's fine, and we can do that. The only thing that I would say is there's a couple of them that are priced so high that do we really even care what they say?
We asked, all four responded? All four have a chance to come to council?
All four presented what they want to do, and we can cull that down if, if we want to. Now, we don't have to. We can invite them here.
If we, if you're going to, in my opinion, if you're gonna pare it down, except for having to do it, what's the reason to have an RFP? If I was one of the higher ones-
That's the whole purpose of an RFP.
No, an RFP is to get quotes for services.
And we have, we should really go with the lowest-cost qualified vendor if we do things right. Is that correct?
It's not a bid, and this is a professional service, so you put out the specifications, but you both know IT can be different from each company. So you really need to find what's the most economical, what's gonna provide the city the most benefit.
And I think we have specific questions that need to be asked specifically to all four of them because all four of them may answer that question totally different. Someone might be able to, that's a lot more expensive, might have a justification why they say, "This is what I do, and here's the reason." Like, some of them, I looked at their response time for a service call, I'm sorry, a ticket, was four hours.
Right.
What the hell? I don't want four hours. I want immediate. I'm sorry. You don't wait four hours to respond back to somebody. That's like saying, "City Hall's down for four hours."
The funny part about that is, we know how PA Connect works, because we're using them. Right now, I've got a ticket request in, since this afternoon, I've still not got an answer. Probably won't till tomorrow sometime.
Well, shame on us for not pushing PA Connect to be under the terms of the contract to be able to follow up on that ticket.
Well, we are, they, they-
And I do this for a living.
I know.
So-
They prioritize their response times based upon the, the call.
They shouldn't. They should just prioritize the call on when it comes in, and what is the severity to downtime for the business or individual.
And that's how they, they rate the calls. If there's a, if the entire city's out, they're gonna respond more quickly.
The difference is, is they don't rate the call. The customer should dictate rating what the call is.
That's not where your contract says, though.
I don't doubt that, but that's the way reality should be. The customer dictates the service, not the company dictates when they get to the service. That's why I have questions to them directly, which I'd like to have them all, if you're going to follow through with this, I'd like them all to present, so we can ask them the questions. Just my opinion.
Do we do that in open forum, or can that be done?
No.
It's not an executive session.
Okay.
It's what?
It's not an executive session.
No, I just think it should be in a public forum.
You have a work session now, so.
There you go.
Say they do a work session as opposed to a regular council meeting. Okay, so, so perhaps this will be pushed off till December then?
Probably.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Yep.
Okay, it's been brought to my attention by several different people. If, if you work at the library, you've seen people going one way, the wrong way. My wife was coming down Parantay, and the little exchange there between Schoonmaker and Donora, somebody's going one way, the wrong way. I don't know how you get that way, do that, but somebody was. I got a complaint from a resident. He was on Fourth Street making a left-hand turn. He's looking right because Schoonmaker's a one-way street, and the traffic should only be coming from the right. And yet, he started to pull out and just about clobbered a guy on an electric motorcycle. The point being is, if you drive down Schoonmaker and Donor, what can we do to, to minimize that? Maybe some one, you're going the wrong way signs, facing the other way. Something along those lines. In fact, you, Dave, do you have any suggestions of how we can address this? Come get a mic. Here, come get a mic. Take in the mic, please. No, that don't work.
I'm just gonna pull up the email I sent. It had everything on it. Okay. All right. In regards to the one-way issue that was brought to my attention the other day, the other morning, we just took a ride through downtown, different intersections, a preliminary area view of things. There are some intersections that if you go a certain way, for example, at Second Street at Donor, if you turn by, well, actually, we'll go down by Oneida and Donor, where you come up by Janine's there, there's no signage for no left turn, one-way, or anything like that. Same thing down on Second Street where the fire department parking lot is and Biyanti Monument is at. There's no signage. If you would come through that alley there, come around, you're facing towards up Second Street there, there's no signage that says, "No left turn, wrong way," nothing. Same thing at Fourth, and the same thing at Eighth Street. All facing, all from, facing south. If you're looking south at the intersection, from like the rivers at your back, there's no signage, either one of those. Also, another thing I noticed, if you leave the Foodland parking lot on Donor Avenue, the Donor Avenue exit and entrance, yes, in the, in their parking lot, they have a directional arrow, which, which direction you should go, but there's nothing across the way that says, "Hey, don't go this way." It's all stuff to look into. Also, the, another suggestion would be, maybe after each intersection, facing- Um, it's all stuff to look into, also, the, uh, another suggestion would be, maybe after each intersection, facing the opposite direction, signs that say, wrong way. You know, uh, you know, you, you, however, I would love to have an officer at every intersection, covering each block, we know that's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
Um, but maybe, uh, and also, if it's not posted, and we go to enforce it, we can't do anything with that. Uh, you know, say i- if we caught whoever, uh, going the wrong way, and they made the wrong turn off Oneida, went toward Rite Aid on Donor the wrong way, there's no posting. So how can we enforce that? So, um, those are my suggestions, just a preliminary, just, uh, scratch the surface.
Okay. Do you have any idea what the total count of signs would be?
No. That'll be a, a, another project, that'll be my next step in that thing, I just wanted to go through and see where I could see the, the biggest things I could, that we can address. Then there are some signs that are older than, I would say, Menneson, they're hanging up, they're very faded, you know, those may, maybe be addressed. Maybe that's something we can look at in the springtime, I don't know, you know.
Also, Mayor, maybe we should reach out, just send a hand to the Penn Dot.
Yeah, and, and, and that's the whole thing I'm leading it up to, is, is if we can put together a list of problems that we've got on Donor and Schoonmaker, I would like to approach Penn Dot to see what they can do to help us with this.
Yeah, and, and a lot of it's coming on, you know, they're going on to Donor Avenue, which is a state highway.
One thing that I did see going on here, and I need to call Penn Dot about this too, if you look at, uh, Donors, you're coming in from the other, from the east, east gate area, there used to be some huge speed bumps, I'd call them, but they were basically frost heaves in the, in the pavement. They came and milled all those down, they, they've improved, made great improvement on that. The point I'd like to make is, I wanna invite them up to come and take care of Third Street, Grand Boulevard, up there on, on the other side of, of the, uh, of.
On that subject, agility program, I spoke to the boss on Friday, and he wanted you to reach out to the state rep or whoever, they have an agility program. We cut something with the long line tractor, for them, they build out the bus.
Come talk to me tomorrow, let's do that, absolutely.
They did talk about doing Grand Boulevard near thirty, huh?
Yeah, well, come talk to me, I'm all for that, I think that's fantastic.
Mayor, he's the city official, so.
Yes, yeah, that's fine. Okay, thank you. The next thing is the Mont Valley Refuge Authority Agreement, um, and that, that's in the, the packet here, I do believe. I went to their, uh, meeting that they held last week, and they awarded the contract to Pro Waste. It didn't get printed?
No, it was by email.
Okay. Well, the bottom line is, they awarded the contract to Pro Waste, as being the low-cost, um, qualified vendor for collecting waste. Even so, it's a substantial increase over what we had from last year. If you recall, we didn't change the rates last year, and as I, as I look at it, it looks to me like we're having to pay some of the garbage fee the last couple of months out of the general fund, because there's just not any money left in the, the refuge account, is that correct?
We have, we have not dipped into the general fund until the end of this month.
Right.
End of this month, we have twenty-two thousand dollars left in the refuse, refuse.
The point being is, we didn't collect enough money for last year, and the rates are going up.
We were, we were short a hundred thousand dollars.
Right, that's exactly what I came up with. So here we are, looking at another rate that's even higher, and I basically took the number of people that pay their, their refuge bill, their garbage bill, and divided that into what we got, it means we gotta raise the garbage rates up to two-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. Now, if you raise the rates to two-hundred-and-forty-six dollars a year, not everybody can afford to pay two-hundred-and-forty-six dollars at one time. I would suggest that we offer quarterly payments, that would be sixty-two dollars every quarter. We need to put together something that makes sense, and we can work with, that has a discount for people that wanna pay it all at the beginning, and penalties if they don't make their payments.
The problem with that is, in my opinion, the twenty-six percent is only the first year.
That's right, it'll go up more next year.
Then it goes up fifteen percent on top of that for the second year, and then it goes to nineteen percent for the third year. One of the first things we need to make sure we do, and it doesn't happen again, is when the Treasury Department, and I'm not putting blame on anybody, but when the bills go out, they need to reflect the increase that's sent upon us from the refuge company that we're in contract with. You're right, that did not happen last year.
We either need to make sure that it happens next, this time next year, or we need to put it, define something now that's good for more than one year.
No, I don't, I'm not in favor of that, I'm in, I'm more in favor of saying, look, twenty-six percent is a massive jump for a lot of people.
It is, it is.
So what I suggest we consider doing is, maybe doing ten the first year, and then maybe fifteen or sixteen, and then catch it up on the third year.
But we can't catch it up, you gotta make sure we pay the garbage bill, I mean, if we, if we only go up ten percent the first year, we're gonna end up owing a couple hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year, not a hundred thousand, we gotta pay the garbage bill.
Can I say something?
No.
Could I say something?
Because he works for the city, you don't.
So I'm working for the city, I'm in for the city, so I can only help.
So.
Tony.
That's the point.
I attended that meeting and listened to everybody else, it seems like other communities, their rates are going up, they said one place was seventy percent of an increase, so this looks horrible. But it, I guess in the, if you look at everybody, it's not that horrible. So, I, I don't know, it just, I, I think from what I took, other places are going up far more than twenty-six percent.
I, I understand that, and I see that, and I fully expect that, but the other difference is, the other places where there's going up like that, they're not maxed out on their millage rate for taxes and everything else, and they're not in the financial position we are either, they have some comfort different places. Like, I'm sure if you go seventy percent in the Rostriver, it isn't gonna hurt her, Rostriver, who?
Greensburg?
They don't have to show us that, be quiet.
So.
Listen, you're gonna be quiet or when I ask you to leave, would you please escort him out? No, you cannot even ask a question, no. He works for the city. I'm sorry. Will you attend to the same meetings you attended, if you're interrupting, ask him out, escort him out.
Pino, Pino. I have a quick question, I'm asking him a question.
Okay, that's fine.
Is your comment strictly about, on the refuge? Is it strictly on the garbage, what we're talking about?
Yes, yes, because I voted against it, because I didn't think it was right, you're asking the right question.
The problem is, is that the next bid was two-hundred thousand dollars more, so not twenty-six percent, it would've been more.
Yeah, but they also told you that, you know, like.
And the bid, they, the contract was been awarded.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'd like to, I'd like to hear what he has to say, because he has personal involvement with what we're asking a question to, just like, Delmar had a personal thing, we can't differentiate, because Delmar is a city employee.
Fine, get it on with, get on.
Yeah, yeah, so go ahead.
Well, I voted against it, because David Lynn's attorney said, first of all, that from, for instance, Pro Waste never answered the bid correctly. Okay, then they put the E-Waste in it, and then also, they only have one contract, which is North for South, they didn't even give, where they, they're from Wisconsin, they didn't even get that. Okay, but it was very vague, the way they bid it, but it was a two-hundred thousand dollar difference, okay, and my question was this. I voted against it, because I think our attorney should've went back to all four of them and say to them, I need a better number. That's how you negotiate, otherwise, I'm sitting there like a duck, okay, I went and see who's the lowest bid, even though the guy did not bid everything that they say they bid. And, and they, he even said that, they even said that.
My question is, and I read through some of it, which I don't understand, which I don't feel comfortable voting on it and saying yes for the, even his contract, is a couple of things. And I know the reason for the first one, but I'm gonna say it, one, we have a refuge authority that negotiates this, came back and awards a contract. I got a problem with awarding a contract to something that's gonna affect our citizens that council doesn't approve, regardless of what it is, I got a problem with that. Two, let me, okay, two, I do have some questions that I didn't see in the proposal from anybody, that what will they, and what will they not pick up? That wasn't anywhere in that contract, it wasn't anywhere in that contract, okay, so that's a question, and three, and I thank you for all your work and everybody on the Refuge Authority, my other question is, if they're gonna award whomever it is, okay? They come to city council and they propose that to us and say, here's what we seen, here might be some questions, here's what we're doing, and we don't do a damn thing until they tell us and explain all three or four bids. Whether, let me finish, whether it's one-point-eight million, or it's ten million, it's up seventy percent. We don't, and should never be voting on something with all the fa- without all the facts in front of us and being able to come back. I am total, I don't care, I'm totally against being able to reward something that I don't have any control over, say.
That's exactly the same.
What am I, what am I doing up here for then?
That's right.
I'm worthless.
You wanna address that, Tony?
They also never put up a bond with any contract, and it's over a million, fuck, you gotta have a bond in place.
They, they've got the bond now.
They do?
They do.
They got one now, because we went to their office and thought, hey, you need a bond, I've never seen one. All I can tell you, when you put in a bid, your bond should be in place, because you negotiate that before.
Well, absolutely, I mean, if I, if I hire a contractor, I wanna make sure you're bonded before I even let you start anything.
They were not bonded, when they bid it, that was one of, they didn't have the E-Waste, they didn't have the E-Waste dancer, they, they said they didn't have the experience, which I disagree. I mean, he was Biggie's son, Biggie's been in business for thirty years, he worked for his dad, I think he truly told the truth. And I don't think our customers, I don't think our people are gonna be happy whenever this guy comes in with a half-assed pickup, and will not pick up your cardboard, and will not pick up your glass, and they can tell you they're gonna do everything, because if they cannot fulfill a contract that is given to them, they're not gonna do their job, I hope I'm wrong. And for the attorney to say, oh, I know of another place that went up seventy-seven percent, the way they do it is like this, you got four contractors, contracts, right? If those four contractors get together and it's a eight, you're gonna get this bid this way. I wanna bid five million, you're gonna bid six, you're gonna bid eight, you're gonna bid twelve, the lowest gets it.
Pino, are you saying all the bidders are colluding? You're saying all the bidders are colluding?
No, they, if they get colluded, yeah, they can, they can do that.
That's what you just said.
No, I said they can do that if they get together, but no, that's not the case.
Usually, when these bids go out for any bids, there's an anti-collusion affidavit that every one of them signs.
No, I understand.
Okay.
I'm just saying, they could do that.
But they don't, so they, the sun could not come up too.
But, but.
The, the bottom line is, Tony, the way I see it, and I could be wrong, Joe can straighten me out, this is not a board, this is an authority, they have the authority to, uh, enter into contracts, they entered into a, a contract.
This is their.
We don't have, we don't have the authority to turn down the contract, that contract was shut down our throat.
Yeah, here's, look, that is between you and your board, right, there's, there's a, this.
That contract came to us, let me tell you, he sent us a letter, David Lynn sent us a letter on November the sixth.
That's.
That's between.
When we're gonna vote on November the seventh, they read who got the job, who, who was the lowest bid, even though he didn't agree, he thought that he didn't fulfill all the paperwork, including the boss. And then right away, we voted on it.
I, council has, council doesn't have any jurisdiction over that process.
I don't agree with it.
Well, that's the way it is.
No, but i- if, if, if council doesn't have any jurisdiction, which I understand as an authority they do, they have their own, but if council doesn't have any jurisdiction, why am I wasting my, why are we wasting our time for us discussing it?
Well, we're part of the, the, the cog.
You're part of the authority.
The city, the city agreed to be part of, a member of the, the cog that runs the authority. So we have to go with what they come up with, now, we could back out from that altogether.
The attorney come up with it, we did not come up with anything, the attorney comes, looks over the number.
Pino, did the Refuge Authority vote?
Yeah.
Did the Refuge Authority vote to award?
Fifteen minutes, we read it, that's it.
That's all, thanks.
And he even said, you want me to read what he said?
I, I, honestly, I don't, I don't really care what he said, that's what their jobs are.
What's the consequences if council fills?
He did, and I'll tell you the whole story.
You're gonna get garbage charges by January one.
So how many were you there to vote?
What?
How many of you guys were there?
Everybody was there.
There were six of us voted, I voted against it, okay, 'cause I don't like to play the game to where that was the best deal. The attorney should've went back and said to them, look, come back with a better number.
You would've had to put the whole contract back out to rebid in that instance.
That's fine, we had three months, what's wrong with putting this job up for bidding in August?
I, I don't, I don't.
At the last minute, we gotta hurry up.
I don't know why the Refuge Authority did it the way they did it, that's what.
No, but I'm telling you that, now, there's another one that if you wanna read, it'll drop it crazy, okay, but this is, you know, within, we had a vote fifteen minutes after it was read. And you know that you were there, okay, and there was people on our board, Menneson, they hasn't showed up for five months, they showed up for the bid. And then they tell me, hey, but you know, uh, the, the company that they picked, each three, three or four is good, what's that got to do with any money?
I just have, I have questions that want answered before I'm gonna vote for anything, because, I mean, I know for a fact, if we go back two contracts ago, when, when waste management, which is expensive, okay, but when waste management was the garbage, our garbage, you could put anything out there, and they took it with never, any questions.
So this, it's an interesting thing, Karen Martinez during the, the board meet, the authority meeting, made this comment, she said that every time they go out for a new contract, the new kid on the street is the one that always comes out with a low bid. The company that had been our provider before comes out with the high bid. It's like Menneson is just a, Menneson and Bell Vernon are just the kinda communities that everybody thinks is gonna be an easy job, they bid it low, once they find out it's not easy, it, they come back the next time with a very high rate, price.
Well, all that means to me is, at one point in time in the future, everybody's gonna get caught up, and everybody's gonna be out of sight in, in a garbage bid.
And that's very, very, very possibly true.
Unless the, unless the guy that negotiates, it ain't up, unless the guy that negotiates sends it back to them and says, this was your, that's your, they get your numbers right.
Well, who, who negoti- uh, who negotiates?
There's no negotiation, it's a public bid.
But you, nothing stops you, but I've been in this business now, nothing stops you from sending a damn thing back.
Then you would reject all the bids and rebid it.
Yeah, and don't re-do it for, for the reason that they're too damn high, but the other reason is, I don't think our people in Menneson are gonna be very happy, because I don't guarantee they're gonna be as good as Connie Holly or whatever.
Let me ask you a question of, of Joe. The authority made a decision, they went out for contract, as long as we're part of that cog, it, it's a done deal.
That's their sole purpose.
That is their sole purpose, is to negotiate garbage.
But when you bid a job.
Will you please let me talk? That is their sole job, is to, to.
That is why the Refuge Authority exists, to bid out the garbage contracts, a joint effort between the city of Menneson and North Bell Vernon.
Yeah.
It's messed up.
It's been like that for.
But it's not right.
Oh, it's messed up.
But they do it like that, it ain't right.
Please quit interrupting, please quit interrupting.
So, you have, your current contract expires December thirty-first.
Right. We also have the need to get Treasury Department to prepare bills and get those out soon, if we delay that, we're gonna be really in trouble, we're not gonna have any revenue coming in to pay the first month.
I think the city needs to reject that contract and send it back to get you a better number, period. I think our people in Menneson are gon- are not gonna be happy.
Okay, we understand that, we understand your point on that, it's not gonna happen.
So, if that's not, if that's not gonna happen, though, I'm sitting here telling everybody that, in my opinion, just my opinion, I want, and I have questions to ask. I want, and I have questions to ask and need answered before I'm voting on anything. I don't care if it's an authority or what.
We have a contract that we have to pay. We are, we have, we, as long as we're a member of that cog, we know what that number is. And it's our job to figure out ways that the city can make the payment on that number. It works out to fifty-five thousand dollars per month.
I think what Tony might be saying, if I'm wrong, is, is sometimes if you have people right here in front of everybody, online, Facebook saying, well, this is what we're including. I know we can't change, but we are going to collect your e-services. We are going to tell you exactly what we will collect if you set it all out on your street. Right now, we don't know that.
Not unless you go to a refuse authority meeting and the authority.
Because this way, sometimes if they're in front of everybody, you either gotta hold them.
Well, wait a minute then, if that's the case, and like Lois is saying, then why can't we contact, who is it, the guy that could bid?
Pro Waste.
Why can't we contact Pro, um, Waste and have them at our next council meeting?
There's nothing, there's nothing that can change. Right, you're not contracting with Pro Waste. The contract's with the refuse authority, always has been.
Again.
You pay the refuse authority every month, right?
Yeah.
It's the refuge authority.
But the Pro Waste contract is through the refuse authority.
Well, I understand that.
So.
But all I'm telling you is what I see did not work.
So we can't, we can't ask them to come?
You can absolutely ask them to come and ask questions, but if you're talking about rebidding a garbage contract that needs to start January 1st, your bills need to go out to your residents by then, you're cutting it close here.
You know something else that happened, Tony, just for the record? I, I don't get it, you know, the bond gotta be in place, normally when a contractor, when a, when a, a bid goes out to a contractor, the contractor gotta have all these i's dotted, all the t's crossed, they didn't do that. So in my opinion, you know, Pro Waste, I mean.
You know, that's, that's a discussion, that's a discussion you need to have with your solicitor. That's a discussion you need to have with your solicitor as to why any bids weren't rejected. Nobody here knows that.
Of what?
He does. He's the one that reviewed all the bids and everything, right? Your solicitor.
Well, if, if that's the case.
That's what you pay him for.
If that's the case, then I'm gonna, I'm asking the refuse authority to make a list of what are the differences between the other haulers.
And they did that, and I provided that in that email that I sent to everybody.
They actually did. The other ones bid according to what they were sent. Pro Waste did not do that.
They filled out the same bid document.
And if you don't do that on any contract, I don't give a shit if it's garbage, construction, and everything else, you're disqualified.
I just don't want this to be a nightmare that we do something and it is an absolute nightmare to our citizens for simple as garbage pickup and we live through a three-year hell.
If we do that, then our problem is with the authority and not with the controller, with the contract.
That's the thing is, the city doesn't, a lot of the citizens don't realize.
They don't care.
They put the blame on.
They're gonna look at us and they're gonna come in here and they're gonna say, what did you do? You voted for this and what is the problem?
But we did not vote for that. We didn't vote for anything except for setting the bills, that's the only thing that we're doing, is we gotta set the bills to pay for the contract. That's our only job.
But we're also agreeing to that hauler.
No, we, we, we agreed that by virtue of their, our, our authority.
If they come here, it's not so much, you know.
I know, it's not gonna change, but if, sometimes if they say they.
Something that the attorney said that it really likes, or I said, what if they don't follow what they say they're gonna do? He said, well, we'll power them, that's what he said, our authority.
Right.
You can say that, I didn't say that, I just.
It's that easy if he writes the contract to make it that easy.
Yes.
I, I don't, I don't see it done. It isn't that easy if you get a challenge, yeah, and it costs, back to the citizen, back to the people collecting the garbage.
The city wants to hear from them.
Will you let us talk?
If you wanna hear from the hauler. Yeah. You have the contact information, give them a call.
I have no problem with that, but that doesn't change anything. It's not gonna change our, our duty to, it's not gonna change our obligation to pay that bill.
I, I don't care, I want them coming here.
That's fine, I have no problem with that.
Cause I got some serious questions to ask them.
But that won't change anything, we can't refuse them.
Yes, you can.
No, we can't, it's not our contract, it is a refuge authority contract.
Why were you there?
Because I wanted to see what they did.
What did they, what, what, what were you there when you were supposed to put your, your change on the, on the thirty gallon barrel? You never showed up until you sent us an email five minutes before the meeting. You know which one I'm talking about, right? You were late. Yeah, that's true. You're not representing Menneson, you're not representing the four people.
Okay, you're getting out of line now.
Alright.
We're done.
Thanks, Pino.
Thank you.
My head hurts. I'll go back to the old way.
So, it's, we gotta, we gotta come up with some.
I would suggest to have Pro Waste stop in so they can answer questions.
We can, but that's not gonna change the price, it's not gonna change our obligation, we need to set the price. If that price is not what we wanna do, then you guys are welcome to come up with a new price. But the bottom line is, we gotta go out with, with the bills soon. You can take my numbers or not, I don't care, but I, I came up with a number that will pretty much assure that we will, will have enough money to pay the bill, no more, no less. I'm not, not trying to, to, to stock away any money.
Well, it doesn't matter, it was a discussion item.
It's a discussion item.
We're not voting on it anyways.
But we need to, if we could come up with some sort of con, uh, consensus, we could ask the, the treasury department to prepare the bills so that on the 25th, they can actually start mailing them out.
You say we have to, cause you said they already voted, that that's when they accepted.
That's right, we have to, we have to use the Pro Waste at the price that we're getting.
But you have to.
Why are we voting?
You have to set the amount.
Are you comfortable with the amount that I set?
And you have to send out the garbage bills. You gotta remember, the authority doesn't do anything but bid out the contract, the city sends the bills out. Your treasury department's waiting to get those bills out. Typically, they're, they've historically been out in for end of November or end of October, beginning of November.
God, some people wanted to send them out back in August.
Right. You have people trying to prepay in the middle of the summer.
Especially if it's gonna go up.
Problem is, we have no idea what the price is gonna be until just last week.
Tony.
Yeah.
It was my understanding, the only difference between all things being equal, the only thing that this Pro Waste didn't do was address the e-waste. And that there's already a system in place with Pennsylvania Clean Ways or whatever to pick this up. And the members of that authority were all sent out this information before that meeting. They sent out an email to explain everything. That was my understa-, and they're gonna pick up glass, which I was thrilled to hear, so I don't have to go to Denora and dump it off in one of their barrels and stuff.
They're not gonna pick up is the computers and TV sets.
Right.
The computers and TV sets we take to the city garage and we've got an agreement for that.
They said like it's a non-issue, and it was my understanding, that was the only difference. That that Pro Waste filled out the forms that they were supposed to, I mean, was that your understanding?
Absolutely.
And the only difference was the e-waste, which is a non-issue. That's what I took away from that.
And you have the metrics they used, it was a points rated system. You have all of that, that the authority considered.
It was interesting, I was glad I was there because this is all new to me, but that's what I walked away with.
Yeah. Well, the end result is that, that we're running in, we're gonna run out of time, is the only concern that I have.
Well, shame on us.
Shame on us, I agree.
Shame on us, this should've been done, damn it, in the middle of summer.
Well, shame on them, that's our authority, that they did it when they did it.
No, shame on us for not pushing the authority to do it. We run the authority.
No, we have representatives that are part of it.
Well, they represent the city of Menneson, which represents city council, which represents, let's get the damn thing done. The only thing I'm not happy about is that 26% the first year, but then people need to understand it's gonna go up another fifteen to eighteen percent.
It'll go up another fifteen percent, it'll go up another two or three percent. Or maybe a little bit more, but not a lot. It'll go up the increase that the, of the contract has. The problem is, we under-collected for the last several years.
I know that, but the bill, according to what you sent me and everything else, it was, according to them, it was eleven, fifteen, and nineteen percent.
So, it'll be the difference between the eleven, fifteen percent that'll go up next year.
But the third year, it's gonna go up another, it's almost twenty percent.
It'll be another seven or eight percent to, will go.
Would this be like quarterly payments?
Well, what I suggested, two hundred and sixty, sixty-four dollars, whatever I put in the thing, is a lot of money. I would suggest that if we allowed residents to pay sixty-two fifty every quarter, that that would make it a lot easier for people to be able to swallow. And that's what.
How much in Minogue Hala they pay, I believe quarterly, and it's about sixty-some dollars each quarter.
It's, it's comparable to what's happening around the area.
And are we taking credit cards?
I believe they do.
Some people are gonna have to charge.
I just think what's gonna happen is, is we're gonna have more delinquents than we have now.
I hope not, cause then we really run into a problem. Well, it's my recommendation that we inform the treasury department, that those are numbers that, that we're gonna have to use. To go ahead and get the cards printed, and on the 25th, we'll vote on it and we'll either throw the cards away or we'll, we'll approve it and continue on.
I don't wanna do that, because the cards to get printed and getting them and mailing, and before you mail them is a couple hundred dollars. And we don't have a couple hundred dollars to say, whoops, whoops.
That's the reason why I wanted to make this, to make everybody's comfortable tonight.
You're still gonna have to vote on it to set the fees.
Right, so there's no.
Yeah, there'll have to be a resolution that we'll have to vote on, but we need to set those at least being in concurrence.
Then we set them on the next meeting. And you vote on it.
Okay, the bills won't go out until first of December, and that's when people are doing Christmas shopping, get a bill is not a good time.
Oh.
They'd get a bill, but it wouldn't be due until what?
The first quarter of next year.
Yeah, well, what we were basically saying is, we would allow early payments to be made up until January or February, I forget.
Yeah, I think it's February.
It may be February.
Do you, do you know when the authority's sending over an updated agreement, too?
They told me they were gonna send it directly to you.
I haven't seen it yet, but.
Okay, so I don't know anything about it, but they said that they would send it directly to you.
So we also need to make sure that we have something in place that this time next year, that there is, if any, a small incremental increase for the next year that reflects that, or we're gonna be right back in the nightmare again where we're at right now.
Well, this is a three-year agreement, so we know what next year's price is gonna be, and we know what the third year's price is gonna be.
You have to remember to pass another resolution at this time next year for 2026.
And we should probably do that before this time next year, like October.
Yes, we should.
Is this a five-year deal?
No, it's a three-year deal.
Okay.
And I think we should also, and I wanna go hang my head out here on, my neck on a block and say, you know what? I think we should start looking for in the future, the very future, that maybe, uh, we wanna take this in-house.
Possibly, why would we think we could do a better job, though, is my question.
Because the contract's 1.8 million dollars, the way it is right now.
Right.
You can get a, you can get a garbage truck for at least three hundred thousand, three, a little bit over than that. You can buy two or three garbage trucks and hire six people, and you still didn't get the 1.8 million dollars.
But you gotta pay the dump fees.
You still aren't gonna get in touch the 1.8 million dollars.
Okay, as I understand it, county, uh, county hauling that doesn't have it, didn't want it because they can make more money off the dump that they have than they can by collecting the garbage.
But again, Ross Draver is doing their own thing.
Right, they invested a million bucks, they got a lot more money than we do.
Okay, but still, the concept is still the same. It doesn't matter how, on the money you have right off the bat, because the garbage fee or whatever the contract is, is what it is. If it's 1.8 million or it's 2.3 million over three years, that number doesn't change. So you still have a large number to deal with for three years. Yeah, you could go buy two new trucks and put a crew out there and do it yourself, and do everything else.
Well, we'll find out, it'll be interesting to see how it works out for Ross Draver too. By the time we get to that point, maybe we'll have some experience with what, how it worked out.
Didn't have to be insurance.
It, it's not something that you can plan overnight, but.
Absolutely, but that's why I said, maybe it's something worth looking into for down, net, three years down the road, if it takes that long to put it in play. Cause we're gonna right back where we were.
You have, what do you have, six guys Delmar? So, and it's not.
It would be, have to have new people.
Garbage is five days a week.
Yeah, you'd have to hire.
You'd have to hire about six or eight people.
The, um, Pro Waste is also, as I understand it, they've got several more communities they've already signed up with in, in the last week, and they've purchased fourteen trucks. So, so they've really grown very fast.
In a week?
In a week, in a week.
Well, I'm done beating this day.
Alright, we'll leave it on the J.
Okay, USDA hourly rate increase, they're asking for basically a, a three percent rate increase, I believe it is. And for inflation, uh, that's spelled out in the contract. Requisition 25, did we send that out to everybody?
Yes.
Requisition 25 will be out on the, as a motion, and then there's two change orders. One is a change order for the lateral that goes between Barts and, excuse me, between Rex Polishing. Rex Polishing had a lateral that was going right into the storm drain, you just don't do that. So they had to extend it by some fifteen feet or so, plus or minus. They used the people that, the contractor that's out there. And I have a little bit of an issue with that, because they use the highest dollar, they are specialists that are hired to do certain work. And when they do things that are not their normal work, you're paying top dollar for something that you don't need to. They already did that project, this is done deal, we're in the hook for, for change order one. Change order two is one, if, and I invite people to go look at that storm drain there in front of Barts that they put in. They built this huge covert that has concrete walls on all sides of it, that collects all the water coming down from City Park. All that water is funneled down to a fifty-inch pipe that goes into the ground. That fifty-inch pipe goes to Parente, goes down and comes out at the river. There is nothing in front of it, that means logs are gonna come down through that thing, they're gonna get jammed up in that pipe. They'll be fishing that, will be fishing, and it'll be our pipe to maintain, we'll have Delmar out there fishing pipe, logs out of that. The thing that really scares me is, when I was ten or twelve years old, I would've looked at that as a perfect place to go play. I would've been playing inside that pipe, and that's just something we can't tolerate. That's just me.
That could hit a restroom, that, that remind, that explains a lot, no, just general.
It, it does. But, but it's my opinion that we need to have a steel grate in front of that thing to prevent people from going into it, debris from going into it, everything else. So, uh, we went to the contractor and said, how much is that gonna cost us? They said twenty thousand dollars. That to me is just over the top, all they were talking about is take some rebar, weld it together, bolt it down, and, and be done with it. I thought that was ridiculous. Now, I may be getting myself into a big pickle here, because I made the bet that we could go out and do that cheaper on our own. Rather than depending on USDA to do a change order for twenty thousand dollars, let's say we could get it done for ten thousand dollars. And then we paid for that out of the line usage fund to do this. Now, it's gonna get paid out of line usage one way or the other, but if we pay for it out of USDA, it gets financed for forty years. So which means that people forty years from now will be paying that, that off, with all the interest that's incurred over forty years. Even at one percent, one percent interest over forty years, accrued over forty years is a lot of money. It's forty percent more. The point being is, I would much feel much better about it if we were able to solve the problem economically using line usage money and just move on. It just makes sense to me that we, the people in the future will probably never say thank you, but we will always know, we saved them a lot of money.
Well, how much is this grate, do you know?
They, they're good, what, twenty thousand dollars? And that's a, one made out of rebar.
Well, one, one thing I'll tell you.
Okay, please do.
That's a major flood area, okay?
Yes.
And as soon as that grate gets covered up with grass, it's gonna flood immediately.
Yes. And that's gonna be up to you to go fix it.
You can't do that at two in the morning, but at three, it's raining.
Well, I'm just saying it's your problem, though.
But it made more sense to put a twelve-foot fence around the whole area, okay? And leave that open, make a childproof somehow, but, so it doesn't clog up immediately.
I think that might be a perfectly good idea, to be honest.
For twenty grand, you've probably been in, you know, and just, I think it'd be wiser to do that than not.
But we're still on this topic? We're still on this?
We're still on this topic?
Yes, we are. I don't have a problem with that.
Why can't we just put a fence over top of it?
Well, I'm saying if you ran a twelve-foot fence around it, let the water run freely, but keep the public out.
I said that already before, just put a fence around the perimeter of it, be done with it. That's all, be done with it, it's not gonna cost.
I just fear that.
So that's not gonna prevent the debris from going down it?
Yeah, but if, but here's the issue.
The grass is still gonna be a problem, it's still gonna.
And you learned your lesson whenever Grand Boulevard flooded, you guys knew about it, right? And it happened again, here, you don't just have Grand Boulevard and cars driving through it, you have that, but you also have a business that's right after that, so.
I do hear rescue people with ropes on, you know, two in the morning, I know. Probably not a complete answer, but what we gotta do too is just make sure that we have our landscaping taken care of through the park so you don't have that debris. You know, make sure the trees are trimmed back far enough away from the creek bed.
Can you think of any way to stop debris somewhere before it gets to to this this void?
I think you just need to keep a better eye on that creek bed and make sure that the grass is kept mowed so that you don't have. What happens is when you come along with the longworm tractor on it and it cuts stuff that's this high, now all that's laying. Then when the first thunderstorm comes through, all that debris moves.
How are we gonna stop that?
So we need to keep it kept low. We need to make sure that that creek bed all the way to City Park Road is kept maintained so that you can not have a big debris. If you see a dead tree land along that creek bed or something, it has to be taken out immediately, you can't let it lay and move along.
So just out of your experience, if we were to put up a twelve-foot fence, barbed wire and so forth at the top of it, all the way around that, just ballpark, what kind of money you think would be involved?
You're gonna be in the same same ballpark problem.
Ten thousand dollars?
No, he said twenty.
Well, if we're doing twenty, we might as well just tell them to go do what they're doing, there's no.
Well, what I'm trying to is so that we don't have a flooding issue.
He says if you put the grate on it, you're gonna have a flooding issue.
Why don't you get with your engineer to talk about, to figure out what, you know, if the flooding issue's there, and I don't know if Tony has any concerns.
The other thing is, is what we did a few years ago is we got a grant to, as Jim was saying, a few years ago we got a grant to limestone that whole creek so that there is no vegetation. Go up through the park and maintain and stabilize it and make it all rock instead of having any vegetation.
Well, if we do that, there's no reason that the grate on the pipe wouldn't be just fine too, I mean.
Until you get that done.
Right. Well, until you get that done, we got the problem either way it goes.
One other suggestion, if you're gonna have work sessions where where we can talk like this, everyone in the group, I think all department heads should be here so that we can have an open discussion.
Well, possibly, but there's a difference between you and some of the other people here, you are a city employee. And therefore, you're part of the discussion, we're asking you for your advice as a city employee. Let's let's continue on. I'll talk to Vitell about the fence and see if that's something we can do too. Who wanted to talk about fee schedules and permits related to the city of Madison?
I just wanted to bring it up that if you look at our fee schedule on stuff, I think it's ridiculously high for what we get. I mean, putting, I don't know how much, Mike, how much is the amphitheater, two hundred, three hundred?
I think it's two hundred.
Okay, you know, at this point, I was to the point of saying, it's a hundred dollars, you clean it up, you get your hundred dollars back. I mean, we have some fees and schedules that are getting, are just expensive.
I think I agree with you, we want to promote the use of these assets rather than making it so prohibitively expensive, nobody can use them.
I mean, and I'll I'll just use myself as an example. Is, I'm looking to put a plastic, one of those corrugated plastic heavy sheds next door to the side of our house for some of my Halloween stuff, and it's an eight by five, and there's a seventy-five dollar permit. For what? It's a plastic shed, it's eight point five, okay? And it's not even on, getting bolted to the ground or on a cement slab. I just think our fees are ridiculous, and I think we should revisit them for the first of the year and make it to the point where we're not making our citizens pay for stuff that they really don't need to pay for.
I don't disagree with that, do you wanna take on putting together something that you can provide the council?
Well, I'll end up slashing all the fees almost.
Well, whatever.
You have a copy of it, Tony?
I do not.
Okay, well, okay, this is something for the future in any event, this won't be on the next next meeting agenda unless somebody wants to devote a lot of time to it.
It's not gonna be hard, it's gonna look at a sheet and say, this may, doesn't make sense, boom, 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 keep it simple.
Usually municipalities just pass it in December for the following year.
Okay.
That's makes sense, so if someone gets, wants to get it to me, I'll make sure we have it on the agenda in December.
Okay, sounds good to me, I got no problem with that. The D C N R grant of seventy-two six, we talked about that, does anyone wanna talk about anymore?
Seventy-five bucks.
Hearing nothing, I'm gonna continue on then, it's getting late. What did you wanna talk about the tan note?
Last month. Are we applying for one? We, yes, that is the question, we have to. So what do we have to do to start, do we have next meeting have a motion to uh explore or start whatever? Joe, I don't know if that's an answer for you.
Um, now?
Or yesterday, we need to, we need to start doing that.
Does anybody have any problem if I make contact with the bank, I've done it the previous few years?
Absolutely not, we we need to do it because there's no guarantees in life.
Okay, so I'll take that one on.
They might be able to turn around a proposal for the twenty-fifth, that would be fantastic.
No problem, I don't disagree with that at all. Chief, you wanted to talk about officer compliment, police car vehicle requirements in the future? Please do, grab a mic.
That was a good chief.
Tell us what you're thinking.
All right, this is what I'm thinking. All right, um, first off, cause you know, quite frankly, I'm just getting tired of talking about them, but police cars. Uh, just gonna go through what we have. Uh, I have five patrol cars, uh, five cars on patrol, one of them's down that you're all familiar with, the catalytic converter issue, won't pass emissions.
Didn't we approve that? We we actually approved it.
That was approved to get fixed.
Yeah, send it down, send it down.
I was not, none the wiser.
It's been approved, get it fixed.
All right.
I will admit painfully.
Yeah, I was not.
But that gets fixed at at uh.
That place that dusted.
The.
The kill.
The kill, that's in our packets too.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was eighteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, eighteen hundred dollars, yeah.
Just get it done.
Okay, I was not aware.
But that doesn't solve all your problems, that's an old police car fixed.
It's coming out of our money.
Okay, so that's one. Uh, that might help to, we have the one that's being fixed at uh Pidditch's, another one.
Any idea when that's gonna happen?
Should be done in a couple weeks.
That's what I heard a couple weeks ago.
He just got, they just got, uh, beginning of last week, I got the copy of it from the state police from the accident report. The insur, selective insurance did their work and Kurt has it, he's working his magic currently on it, I don't know how long.
And what's it costing?
Hard deductible.
That's a lot, so what's it costing? Hard deductible's twenty-five thousand.
No, no, not for for vehicles.
Legal claims.
That's for legal claims, for vehicles it's five hundred bucks.
It's five hundred dollars.
Five hundred?
Yeah.
Yep.
So, uh, I don't have the estimate on that car, I just received the estimate on the other car when we had a individual in the back who was arrested after a brief chase, tasered the whole nine yards and kicked the back door out. Uh, that needs to be put back into place. We haven't done anything with it yet, it's it's still on the road, it's it's temporary fixed.
Is that an insurance claim?
That's an insurance claim and also that's a uh a restitution claim also.
Okay.
So.
When did that happen?
That happened a while ago.
It's the first time we're hearing this.
Yeah. Well, again, that's probably.
Why are we not hearing about things like this?
I don't hear about all the things that happen either, but that's.
No, this is, this was September.
Okay.
September, late September.
That was one of those emails you sent to everybody that.
Yeah.
That you had this thing occur.
Yeah.
Over the weekend, I remember that went to everybody.
Yeah, and that was the, in the the loop everything, so it's.
It's been a while.
It's been a while. But to get that back to where it should be, that's uh something we're gonna work with, uh. You know, it's not an immediate fix now, it just needs to get there at some point.
That's not a terribly old car that.
No, that's a two thousand twenty with seventy-six thousand miles on it.
So as soon as you get enough cars where you can afford it.
I can afford, that's the problem, I I I have an another car which just uh was told to me a couple days ago, it's slipping. It's a two thousand twenty, it has less than sixty thousand miles, so it's covered under warranty. So, that's covered under, but I can't take that to C Harper.
Harper if you don't have another.
I don't have a car, you know what I mean, that's, i- it's just an endless cycle. That's why I'm hoping that we get lucky with some grant money and we could buy uh to get us back up. And that right there, I have three vehicles, they're two thousand twenties, and like I said before, uh, that's gonna scare us here in a year or two.
Well, so if we can get this one with a catalytic converter, at least on the road again.
Yeah.
That'll free up where you can get the one.
Yeah, and and again, we get that fixed, that could, it could last for, that car's ten years old.
There is no doubt that we need to come up with some some way to get you some more police cars. Right now that we're looking at L S A for that, but there may be other things that we can get some money for.
I, uh, like I said, I I talked to, I reached out to Enterprise cuz I know some departments, bigger departments and departments that are well off, just curiosity of what it would be to lease, lease vehicles. They won't even look at us, they need twelve minimum vehicles in a fleet. So they won't even, even if you put our vehicles and the street cruise vehicles together, you're you're not even scraping it.
So one of the things that I see happening pretty quick is probably this opioid money where you can get a dare car. The dare car is very much specific for drug and alcohol.
Yeah.
Uh, things, but by the same token, um, that doesn't prevent it from being used if it's in transit and it sees a violation going on.
And and that's what the upcoming meeting I have with the the county, once I get a letter from their solicitor.
What you can do with it.
What, then I'll have a meeting up at the county, what we can actually, I apply for the wages and uh wages and benefits for an officer for the school year.
Uh-huh.
Um, the uh, the vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
And equipment, not not equipment, but like uh, like they have the, the training, the training was part of it. But, and that kinda leads me into my next topic here, but the uh, like the pamphlets that they hang out to the kids and the programs and stuff like that.
It's just like any other grant, you have to provide a detailed list of the things that you're gonna spend the money on.
Yes, as far as I understand, yes.
And probably even a.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So it's for the fiscal year, so next year, let's say you apply again, God forbid you, hopefully you do get it, but if you didn't get it, does the vehicle that disappeared with the officer?
I don't believe so, that's what's gonna be one of my, that's one of my questions I'm gonna ask.
Stay in our possession once.
Because if that's something that, hey, we have an extra officer, we can utilize at this point, this time, yada, yada, they're in the school.
Yeah.
Which is another thing, that's another positive thing, which get us an actual Madison officer in the school, will keep us aware of some of the activities that are happening up there. Uh, there was a uh incident last month where threats were made on a Thursday. I didn't get a phone call till Monday morning. So, this will keep, like, just keep our eyes, just keep and be involved, the the officers involved, the kids and all that.
Would the vehicle kinda be like that, could be used by other officers at?
I believe it like.
Sort of like a housing authority thing, where like, you remember like an officer had to stay there?
You're just like, you know, whenever I first started here, I was a housing authority.
Yeah.
I stayed in the housing authority until there was a call.
Yeah.
Again, I wanna get further, I'm sure we have some leeway, you know, we're we're down with.
It's a pretty stringent.
Yeah.
Requirements with that grant.
Yeah.
Two thousand nineteen, we were able to secure an officer and a car for that. Cuz my wife and I drove all the way out to the middle of the state in that Jeep.
Yeah, that was the uh.
That was the drug.
Settlement for.
No, that was the the drug officer.
That was the drug officer, yeah. And nobody else could drive that car except for the D V A agent or the officer.
Yeah, and that car was.
That car went with the officer.
That went with the officer and then it was traded in, now that's where the.
Then it went to you, then it went to somebody.
Well, now that's where they traded it in for the Mitsubishi.
Yes.
So that's what.
Okay, yeah.
So instead of the car sitting there, that's the one I've been, that's the one I just use. Um, so that's, I'm just tired of talking about vehicles, you know. I'm just tired of talking about vehicles, I just wish everything would.
The only thing I'd ask chief is, on that, you said one of them is slipping.
Yes.
What's slipping, the transmission?
Yeah, they 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 believe it's the transmission.
Okay, so, take that car and have it go to C Harper's, that leaves you with how many, three?
Two.
My question is if you take it to C Harper.
I thought you have five.
I have five.
So my math.
One, one's at Pidditch's. One has the catalytic converter.
Yeah.
Wait, wait, let's see, yeah, that'll leave me with two vehicles. So the third one is the transmission one.
Does C Harper offer any type of loaner?
Well, you can't use a loaner for a police intercept.
No. So I have, I have the car seven one is the uh the white hybrid.
We just paid off a vehicle this year.
Yeah, that you paid off, I think you paid off three, and those are those two thousand twenties. Or two of them.
Okay, we got you a new one.
We got you a new one out of our fund, which is the.
Four, so that's four vehicles.
Twenty-three, yeah.
I'm trying to understand how you go down to two.
All right, so, currently, until I get that car back from Pidditch, that vehicle obviously can't be used. I have the other one, if I take it to uh go get fixed, to get looked at, that takes that out of service.
These three.
So now we have the catalytic converter car, which needs to get.
That's the one that goes to.
Right, so if I take it there, I don't know how, it may, it may take a day, I don't know how long it takes to put catalytic converters in.
I think he said it was on the invoice, I think, less than a couple days, three days.
Okay, well then, that makes, then I'll have three.
Yeah, we didn't get that car fixed as quickly as possible.
Okay, cuz I was not aware that that.
I thought it was already getting fixed.
I wasn't aware of.
I talked to Rodney and I thought Rodney was gonna get together with you and get it done, cuz.
Uh, it's, as far as I know, it's still sitting in on the the side up at C Harper.
Give Rodney a call tomorrow and arrange to get that vehicle taken to overkill.
Yeah, cuz I could even, he could even.
Machine kill or something.
Machine kill, it's.
It's a machine.
Oh, yeah, it, yeah. No, it's it's someone that's a.
But I'm concerned about the one that's slipping because if we don't get that or that, you stop driving that, if it gets worse, I don't want Ford or C Harper coming back and saying, you shouldn't have been driving this vehicle and you're driving it now and now it's worse and we're not gonna honor the warranty.
Well, that's my, I need, I need police cars, that's my bottom line, like, I can't leave, you know, I need, I I I'm on the edge with three on the road right now, you know, it's, cuz we, I, God forbid something else will happen.
Does that include yours?
No, mine's not marked, mine's a, a Mitsubishi Outlander.
Can we use it temporarily?
Are you gonna transport prisoners?
Call another vehicle, but I mean.
There's no, there's no lighting on it, there's no, there's no siren.
It's just a vehicle?
It's just a vehicle, you know, that's stuff we could do, we could put, we could get a little light turret on top and throw a little siren on there.
I'm just trying to figure out, just the one all crossed my head, what do you do if you're in the vehicle and you see something that you need to pull somebody over for?
Yeah, well.
What do you do?
As far as I go from my house, it mostly goes from my house down to there and back, you know, so.
I just thought I'd ask, I didn't.
But usually whenever I'm on, throughout the day, I'll grab a car and go.
Go around, yeah.
Yeah, just for that purpose there.
Well, let's get that one fixed as quick as we can.
Okay, well, I was unaware that that, we got the green light on that, I'll get that addressed tomorrow morning.
And I would call C Harper and find out how long do they figure they need to fix that slipping. And I would call C Harper and find out how long do they figure they need to fix that slipping.
At least to do the analysis on it.
Get it in and out in one day.
It may be low on transmission for something really simple in an hour.
Could be a hose or something. I I don't, I don't, that's gibberish to me at times. So, all right, the next issue is, this is, I think, in my mind is easy. Um to hire another prisoner watch individual. They pay him twelve dollars an hour. It relieves us from sitting there, pulling a guy off the road, or if he has to do reports.
How many do you have now?
We only have a couple. We got uh Yo-Yo, and we can't get Yo-Yo, or if we can't get um.
Did we hire somebody specifically for that?
Yeah, we have uh, we have Lloyd, we have uh.
We had somebody else.
Uh Michaela Speck.
And those are both part-time jobs when it is required.
It's, there's no hours required, there's no nut, there's, they can get.
You need them, when you don't, you don't.
We need them, i- if we don't, we don't. If we have one of our arrests. That, w- we arrest the domestic violence, and we can't get prisoner watch out. And we need to, and it's a busy day, and I ain't got two guys working, you know.
And do you have anybody that you?
Then we have to call, we have to call in overtime.
As a part-time prisoner watch?
What's that?
Do you know of anybody you can bring in as?
Yes, that's what I was talking.
Are you trying to just create a list?
Yeah, we have a list. We have two people on that list.
You need to add to that list.
I wanna add a person.
I have no issue with that.
So, that's uh Dennis Wade, he lives right up there on uh. Uh, I think he lives up there in Eisenberg's.
There's never a time when you're gonna need both of them down there when you get the time. It's just.
And and it's, it.
I don't care if you have a half a dozen people on your list.
Yeah, and and it goes by, you know, we, yeah, we go down a list.
Perfect.
Yeah, it's just a rotation. See, if Yo's first, Yo goes, he ta- and then we call Michaela. If Michaela's not available, then we go back to you, you know.
Yeah, like I said, I don't care how many people's on that list, myself.
Usually sit there just till the county.
Until. It depends what they're there for. If we're, if we're housing them for, say, a public drunk, anywhere from six to eight hours.
So or like, let's say arson.
Arson, we, if it's an arson call or a domestic violence call or something like that. It's mostly just to keep an eye on them in case, my gosh, we're doing the charges.
Yeah.
If they don't get, if they don't get another call, that's that's great. They can sit down and type the criminal complaint up. If they have to transport them to Greensburg, depending on what time it is. If it's in the afternoon, they could go to night court, get them arraigned. If they. Miss the night court window, they could transport them up to Greensburg.
This doesn't really affect the budget.
Yeah, this really has zero effect on the city. It's just, you need a list of people, you can call.
It it's just something that helps us out to uh, you know, to to help. Just watch prisoner, especially if you have a uh, and that's where we get into, like, we house prisoners sometimes for. Uh like Chalory. Um if we can't get a prisoner watch person out, someone on our list, we tell them no. Because I can't legitimately, uh, I can't.
Responsibility, there's no one there.
That, or I can't uh validate in my mo- own mind, calling out a full-time officer at a time and a half. So you're looking at, what, forty-five dollars an hour?
And it could be a twelve-dollar job done.
And there uh, the the bill for housing someone there is a hundred and seventy-five.
Yeah, doesn't work.
So.
I'd say get somebody else on your list.
Yeah.
What are the requirements for that person?
Just pass a background.
That's it?
That's it, ba- a passive background, be a good moral character, you know.
Like a babysitter.
Yeah, and you're you're you, they they sit there, there's uh, every ten minutes is a check. They have to check on a prisoner. There's a, there's a log sheet to sign out. And there's also, you, whenever you're in between that, you just make sure they're not causing harm to themselves, causing harm to the cell. Nine times out of ten, they usually pass out there on the cold uh cells.
Sometimes they're.
Sometimes they're combative as combative can be.
Right, and verbal as possible.
That's whenever, i- if there is a problem, that's whenever the, that person calls in, the uh cars on the road, they deal with it. And if it's something more where we can't house them, or they need just to go, either. It's, they need to get evaluated for any uh medical or mental uh ailments. They'll go to the hospital if they just, you know, need to get transported to Greensburg for. Till they get arraigned.
Yeah.
You know. Uh, so that's an easy one. The other one is, uh I need two, two officers. We had two people resign recently. That was Sergeant Stoken and Sergeant Mickens. We did a testing uh recently. We had five people apply for the test. One failed the physical agility. Two withdrew their uh interest, cause they got jobs elsewhere. I have two people left on the list. I said, uh, did I send you names? Did I send you?
I'm not sure.
I didn't see them.
I don't know, I thought I did. But if not, I could send you names. Uh there still needs a. Uh I would like to get them hired. Obviously, it's not gonna be like that. The one individual on the list is a dare officer. So we can utilize uh their training in that role. As that we 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 are awarded for. Uh the other one is a kid straight out of the academy. Uh, and he's taller than me. So I I I have to look up at him. So uh that's what I'm asking for is the hire of the two officers. I could send you the details. Um, and. That will re- get me a little bit better to where we were. I would love to have five officers. But again, with money is a big, a big ticket, and also a, there's. I um, there's no interest, there's no, there's only a handful uh people going into actual police academies now to become officers. Um, that's something I was talking with a uh, the guy who runs our testing today. Uh about a program to hire individuals off the road. We send them to the police academy. We lock them down for X amount of years. Uh through MOPAC and through the, I believe it's MOPAC, they have grants for. They will pay back a percentage of the academy fee, which is less than five thousand dollars for the acca- to go to the police academy. And a, a percentage of the wages. So if we decide to say, hey. Ramoja, you wanna be a police officer, we're gonna send you. Um, me, that's something, you know, I was thinking maybe we get them here. Fourteen dollars an hour to go to the police academy, that's roughly fifty percent of the starting wage. Just to give them something to stay interested with it, uh how to say, hey, I wanna be a police, that way they can concentrate on being the 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 academy. And not having to work two, three jobs. It's right, so that's a working job there.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
The um, oh, I don't I don't know if they're still doing it or not, but at one time, the NAACP would pro- provide the uh funding. For anybody to go to the police academy. Les Carpenter was another person with a bar over there. He was, he was offering. Are any of those still available? Do they help any?
I don't know, but I'd welcome it. I welcome any help that I can get.
It might be worthwhile checking in on some of those things you can see.
Nope, there's no age for, not for municipal police academy. You have to be anywhere from the age of eighteen years old all the way up to.
Whatever.
You could be ninety years old, if you, if you could do that. If you could pass the physical agility test to get in, you're in.
The, the uh, other thing that.
Come on, Lois. Come on, come on.
The other, only other thing that I'm thinking, and and this may be uh, it's a black hole, and I don't wanna jump down this rabbit hole, but. Clearly, there's some morale issues at at the police department that we still need to work on. The um, the, where I'm getting with this is, somewhere along the line, you came up with a plan that. Officers working four twelve-hour shifts was the way to do things. It was more efficient in scheduling with everything else. Is that still true with the number of officers you have right now, or should we be looking at the work schedules, the way that we're doing the scheduling?
And I um, the majority of my officers, I don't wanna say, I'd say probably, probably all of them now. Uh like the twelve-hour schedule, uh for the fact of.
The long weekends.
You, the the long weekends, you're off every other weekend. Whenever we worked the eight hours. And whenever I was a lieutenant working eight hours, I had a weekend off once a month.
Right.
You know, uh, there was an increase during those eight hours, and I don't know what the correlation is. Of call-offs and, you know, all the other stuff.
So twelve hours is working much better for everybody.
Twelve hours, it actually, um if I could pull the records, I have to get the records from uh whenever we were on eights.
It was just an innocent question. I mean, is is that the most efficient way to schedule things?
Whenever, going back into late two thousand twenty, when our department got hit with COVID, half the department was out with COVID.
Mm-hmm.
That twelve hours, I think, saved us, uh saved us. It, you know, people were tired. But that's how we were able to offer coverage to the city for twenty-four-seven. You know, cause I know myself, I was out a week, you know.
Lastly, but not leastly, with the uh tightness of the city budget right now, how long can we wait before we bring somebody else back on?
That, I don't know.
How many vacant spots do you have?
I have two. I have two vacant spots.
Right now, we're incurring a lot of overtime because we, of the shortage of manpower.
If someone would happen to call off, that forces overtime. Now, I've uh, there are some officers who have some vacation time and personal time left. I've been reaching out, I've been sending emails to them and notices for the last couple of months. Please let me know so I can manipulate the the schedule the best I can to cover those times off. Because within uh for the, the Teamsters contracts, for example, I can't change that schedule within three weeks unless it's an emergency. A vaca- someone using a vacation day is not an emergency, you know, uh. So they, my uh, my officers have been very receptive to that. Say, hey, I need, I wanna use a personal day here, I wanna use a vacation day here. That way I could finagle the schedule around to cover. So there's no shortages to to take back from the overtime, trying to help a little bit.
Okay.
But again, if we, i- i- if I walk out of here and you guys give, and I I know that's not the purpose of this meeting. But if you give me the blessing today to go hire two officers, that ain't happening for a mu- uh at least a couple of months. Because the one kid still has to finish his uh uh stuff in the, his certification with, in Harrisburg. Any onboarding perks, it's, it takes a while for an officer to get on.
Right. Okay. It's just a matter of economics as far as I'm aware.
So i- and that's, and I'll 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 leave with this, and you know, I look at it at a. A different way, and it's in the back of my head, the economics, but on the other aspect of it is. Our call volume and everything like that, like, if you look, there's, you know. Uh Councilman Nestor reads off a report of, you know, how many citations we wrote, how many of this, how many. There's more to that, there's more that we do, like.
Well, just my virtue of things, from now to the end of the year is gonna be particularly bad, too.
Yeah, and just UCR compared, UCRs, uh and Lieutenant Thompson is in charge of U- UCRs in my department. Um, we'll just pick assaults per hundred thousand, and they they rate everything to a hundred thousand. Per hundred thousand for the city of Madison is eight hundred eighty-six point five. Just to put that in a little bit of perspective here, let me find it. City of Pittsburgh assaults per hundred thousand is one hundred and thirty-six. Where we surpassed the city of Pittsburgh per the UCR reporting. So that just give you.
Other, other places, you know, like New Kensington or Jeanette or something.
Yeah, I, here, you can have, you, you, if Michael wants to make a copy of this, this is the. This is a January twenty-three to December twenty-three for the full year. So if you wanna, there is other departments on here, Ross Draver, Chalory, California, Carroll, you know, uh Jeanette, Latrobe. Uh even the state police, but that's something, if you can just put a little perspective on. The kinda stuff that the, my department has to deal with. So with the, you know, I did a uh, a town hall meeting, I think it was back in twenty-two. Where I did a comparison where the officers, actually, I have that here. The amount of incidents per officer was, you know, broken down to other departments, mostly in, I believe, West Monroe County.
According to this, Madison's the worst place to be for assaults.
Yeah.
Jeanette is number two.
Yeah.
And it goes down from there.
Yeah, like um, in twenty-two, the police comparison. Um, per, now we had one and a half uh incidents per citizen. Uh, Jeanette had one point zero two. Incidents per officer that we ha- we handled was eight hundred and seventeen. Um, and. New Kensington was seven hundred and twenty-six. We had thirteen full-time officers at the time, they had twenty-three. So we do a lot.
You need help.
We need help. And those two, I know, I understand, we have a budget, and I know money is a big talker. I, I need at least two more officers. Uh like I said, I wish I could have five, but.
Oh, we can just put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
All right. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Hey, let's see if we can get through this.
My turn?
It's your turn.
I can fly through these longer. Motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund, the amount of forty-five thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and fourteen cents. All invoices are attached to agenda's attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chikowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mo.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the recreational account, the amount of three hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-two cents. All invoices are attached to agenda's attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chikowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mo.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Parks Fund, the amount of three thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars, twenty-four cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda's attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chikowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mo.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the liquid fuels fund, the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars, forty-five cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda's attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? I'll ask one real quick, just, just out of curiosity, do you know how much is gonna be left in the liquid fuels at the end of the year?
I will report that.
Okay, thank you. Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chikowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mo.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the line usage account, the amount of twenty-one thousand, nine fifty-eight, seventy-five. All invoices are attached to this agenda's attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chikowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mo.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the grant fund, the amount of four thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars, forty-eight cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda's attachment F.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chikowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mo.
Yes.
Motion to approve the transfer of sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and ten cents from the general fund to the payroll account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?